So we will move on to item six point two or nine oh six AM item. Consideration of update on COVID nineteen. Dr. Pace, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and good morning supervisors. Good morning, the public. Yeah, today we're going to give the COVID response update for Lake County and try to keep it brief today, but any questions or topics you want to go in deeper? That's great. And so overall, the cases are continuing to improve. We're starting to see real good numbers now, and Sarah will go into that in just a minute. We're also having the vaccine continues to roll out in a good way. And we're getting all the vaccine out that we get into the county, continuing to do that. And we are seeing some potential to move into the red tier. We're hoping under the current data that we'll be able to move into that tomorrow. The state's going to make their final decision and we'll announce it at noon today. But it's all signs are favorable at this point. So maybe Sarah can go into the data and then I'll talk a little bit about each of these. And then we can take questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. Like Dr. Pace said, things continue to improve in Lake County and statewide. On the left, we're looking at the number of tests conducted and reported yesterday in the state of California. The gray line is the seven day average. You'll, the state has changed how it's reporting some of these statewide data. I actually think it's an improvement. They're now, in most cases, reporting the seven day average. Previously, they'd been reporting the fourteen day average. And so these are more timely data and I think more useful. And I'd encourage people who are interested to go to covidnineteen.ca.gov to see some of the improved functionality on the site for data at both the state and Lake County level. So here we see that testing continues to decline statewide as does test positivity. So the seven day testing positivity is down to one point nine percent, the lowest we've had since the beginning of the pandemic. Over three point five million cases have been identified in California. Yesterday, about twenty five hundred new cases were reported. Another thing that I'll note change in how the state is reporting it, or a couple of ways you can look at it is actually by episode date. So when people's, when the first known infection was. So again, I think this is an improvement over just report date. So we can better understand when people are getting infected. And these data were looked at this previously, but not available this way on the public dashboard. Same similar change until how the state's reporting deaths. So they're reporting it by date of death, not the date deaths were reported. So again, can better understand trends. And you can see here on the right that over fifty five thousand people in the state of California have died from COVID. The seven day average continues to decline. Positive indicators in our healthcare system continue to declining numbers of COVID positive people who are hospitalized. About thirty eight hundred yesterday and about a thousand of those people were in the ICU. In the last seven days, we've identified about forty new cases. And for over three thousand two hundred total cases in Lake County, we've identified one more death, bringing the totals of forty three deaths among Lake County residents. The week I have here in red on the Epi curve, this is looking at the number of cases identified by week, episode week here. And for the week of February twenty eighth to March sixth, which is the week in question that will make up our tier assignment that Dr. Pace mentioned will be announced by the state later today, we believe will move us into the red tier. And I'm going to go into briefly the changes regarding the daily case rate at the state level. So as of yesterday, nineteen percent of doses administered in the state of California have gone to communities in what the state calls the Healthy Places Index, HPI Quartile One. So these are communities with some of the least healthy community conditions. And the state had said that when we administer over two million doses in this quartile, they were going to relax some of the thresholds for the daily case rate to support communities reopening and lessen restrictions. So we surpassed the two million doses, I believe it was on Friday. And so many counties or some counties, excuse me, moved from the purple tier into the red tier over the weekend. And so here's the new thresholds. So because we have two million people vaccinated in this HPI Quartile One, the red tier is, the daily case rate is now four to ten per a hundred thousand cases. So in Lake County, if we have under forty five cases in a week, we will be in the red tier. To be in the orange tier indicating moderate transmission is one to three point nine daily case rate. For Lake County, that's no more than eighteen cases in a week. And the state has set another goal that when we reach four million dose or four million people vaccinated in the lowest HPI quartile, they'll further relax some of these thresholds to make it to allow counties to lessen restrictions. So this map that I'm showing you on the right was announced, they were, these are the tier assignments as of March twelfth, using these new thresholds when we cross that two million threshold. And you can see that many county, the state is turning more red, meaning last week when we presented about eighty percent of the state's population was living in a purple tier indicating widespread transmission. And now as of Sunday, about sixty five percent of the state's population are living in a red tier. And Lake County's metrics for this period are five per a hundred thousand for the daily case rate with a three percent testing positivity. So that's why we believe the state will announce at noon today, moving into the red tier tomorrow for Lake County. And just a quick update on the vaccine progress locally. About fifty seven hundred, and I'm changing how I'm reporting this. So you may note that to follow how the state is reporting about fifty seven hundred people, sixteen years of age or older are partially vaccinated, meaning one dose. This is about eleven percent of the population. About fifty nine hundred people, sixteen years of age plus are fully vaccinated, have received both doses in Lake County. And this is about eleven percent of the population. So twenty two percent of your population has received at least one dose. And this is as of nine PM last night. And then just my last slide, tracking by age, fifty five percent of people over the age of seventy five have now had at least one dose. And almost fifty percent of people sixty five to seventy four have had their first dose. I'm validating the race ethnicity data to ensure it aligns with the state reporting. And then also, we'll reporting that next week. And then also working on tracking these data by the Healthy Places Index in Lake County. And that's all I have for this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So I just want to point out that she reported the total percent of people vaccinated a little differently than we've reported before. So really, total number of people that have been at least partially vaccinated is over twenty percent now of the adult population, right? And so just to go over the vaccine situation, that's the biggest news that we have right now. The inventory is about the same for the next couple of weeks. We're getting a couple thousand doses per week. Supposedly, in April sometime, that number will increase dramatically. So this will, you know, at least double, maybe even triple. So we're gonna probably get a whole lot of vaccine in the near future. The, there was a shift this week, it started yesterday, to include people with medical conditions, age sixteen to sixty four. And this is new. There's certain medical conditions, they have a list, the state has a specific list. These are the conditions that are thought to be more likely to lead to death if people get a COVID infection. So and initially, we were talking about getting notes from your medical provider, but the state changed that now on Friday afternoon. And they said that basically, we just need to have people self declare that they meet the qualification. So it's kind of on each individual to look at the list and decide, and decide that that's, that they, yes, they do qualify. And then they sign a piece of paper and come on in. We're not challenging that or looking at that. There's issues around confidentiality and things that the state felt that it was just not a good idea to do it that way. So we are now, at this point, we are not asking for notes from the provider. If people have that, we're happy to see that and deal with that. But the criteria really for the medical conditions is that people just sign themselves in. We, there was a questions last week about people from out of county coming in and getting the vaccine. Sarah and the team did, looked at that and found that there was actually very low number of people that were, that that was happening. We were, our staff goes through the people that have appointments the night before to make sure that they have, that they are in county. And if they're not, they contact them and let them, and cancel their appointments. And also, we have people at the front gate checking IDs and making sure people have local addresses. And I think that's really paid off because really more people in Lake County are getting vaccine out of county than there are people out of county coming to Lake County to get it. So that seems to be not a particular issue right now. I think partly because of all the work that's being done on the backside. So we're going to be shifting the sites starting next week. So this week, we're going to be Monday and Tuesday at Lakeport, Thursday and Friday in Clear Lake, as we've been previously. Starting next week, we're going to go to just one day in Lakeport because we're not filling up all the appointments there. And we're going to go to three days in Clear Lake. So we will, starting Monday, we will be one day, Monday in Lakeport at the drive in, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at Red Bud Park in Clear Lake. No appointments on Fridays or Saturdays or Sundays. We are also going to be, well, so just in terms of staffing, we are, you know, needing twenty five to thirty staff per day just to sort of emphasize how, how many people are really stepping up to help us here. There's a, you know, we're using temp agency, we're using folks from other departments in the county. There's volunteers, a lot of the clinical people are volunteers. It's, it's definitely, you know, a lot of people every day helping to make this thing flow because we've got between five hundred and now a thousand people a day coming through each site. The appointments are going to be switching. So this is the state mandate to go to this, it's called My Turn. It's a new scheduling platform, a new data platform. The first day is going to be Friday. We're still having a lot of kind of problems getting it going, but we need to go that way. And so we're going to go ahead and start it. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be a different scheduling process. So if you are getting an appointment today or Thursday, that's going to be the old way we've been doing it where you go on our website, find the link and get scheduled. Starting Friday and moving forward, you go to myturn.ca.gov and work through that process to get an appointment. If you don't have online access, there's a phone number there that you can call and you're going to have to call and do it. We don't have that appointment open yet because we've just been having to do some of the technical things, but it should be open later today for Friday and moving forward. I think there will probably be some bumps with this. So I encourage people to be patient and just, you know, recognize that this is just part of the new process. But it's, it will help. Once we get to where we're getting two to three times as much vaccine and this, this setup will be better, I think. I've also heard that in other counties that started a little earlier than us, that the phone contact isn't nearly as good as what we've been trying to provide in Lake County up to now. But if you speak Spanish, it's that they have a Spanish language person. But you have to kind of work your way through a whole, you know, menu of options to get to where you can get some help and it can be a little bit frustrating. If people are having a hard time with that, what we'll probably do is, is ask, get some phone banks to help people make the, make the appointments. The, the state is putting what this third party administrator agreement, and I think that's what we're going to be talking about in a little bit. So I won't go into that anymore. But that's a, it's a big deal from the state point of view. They're basically taking over more and more control of this and the inventory and the distribution of the vaccine. And that's what this is the, the MOU to do that. The Ethics Committee met again last week and this was their recommendations. I'll just read the specific recommendations that they gave mainly so people can continue to, if they have specific questions, they can go ahead and submit them and we will give it to the committee and then they'll take it under consideration. So the public defenders last week asked that the committee review the ability of public defenders to get vaccinated because of court appearances. The committee reviewed the response of the Lake County Superior Court, where in-person hearings for criminal matters are ongoing and jury trials will be resumed shortly. Based on this information, the committee recommends public defenders and district attorney staff who are scheduled to appear in person for criminal matters should now be considered eligible for vaccine. This recommendation does not extend to office workers and support staff who are not required to appear in court. The committee also recommends that the court, in its outreach for jurors, should encourage fully vaccinated citizens to step up and serve in order to best protect the jury pool. And then there was another, this is in other business. The committee also considered whether, starting three fifteen twenty one, persons aged eighteen to sixty four with medical conditions should be required to provide verification of eligibility. In the interest of preserving limited doses to those that are deemed eligible per state guidelines, the committee recommends that persons in this group provide a simple statement from their physician indicating that they are eligible for vaccine when they check in on the site. With respect to all its recommendations, the committee continues to acknowledge that the situation is very fluid and anticipates that its recommendations will change with each passing week. So that one changed, this, this was on Tuesday that the committee met and on Friday, the state came out with their new guidelines about that. So that has been usurped now by the state. We are in the process, I, I think Supervisor Sabatier asked us to post these on our website. The person who does most of the website manipulation has been out for a couple of days. It's either up today or it will be up later today or tomorrow. And yeah, so I think that's it. But if people have specific concerns that they want addressed by the committee, they can just go ahead and send it into the MOOC email site. So the tier system, like, like we mentioned a couple of times, we think we are moving forward to the red tier starting tomorrow. The state will make a final decision and make the announcement at noon today. But it looks like the way we're interpreting our data, we should do that. It mainly depends on when they start the clock for the two weeks. And I think we should be fine. So what this means is starting tomorrow, it won't start today. They'll make the announcement today, it'll start tomorrow. The restaurants can open for twenty five percent capacity for indoor dining. Gyms, yoga and dance classes can open for ten percent indoor capacity. And the middle schools and high schools will be able to open for onsite learning. My understanding is the vast majority of them in the county will probably start doing a hybrid learning process by next Monday, which means certain number, kids won't be there in school five days a week onsite. But to keep the classrooms decompressed a little bit, some kids will be a couple of days a week and then home distance learning a couple of days a week. Other kids will be there other couple of days. So it sort of keeps the numbers down in the schools. We will be, you know, we have to be in the tier for a couple of weeks. I think it's two weeks before we can consider going to the orange tier. The numbers that we're getting now are good. If they keep going down this way, that we'll probably be in the orange tier within, you know, maybe three to four weeks. And also, as Sarah was pointing out, with the, once the state gets to four million doses of vaccine in the lowest quartile, that will be expanded and we'll probably move in quicker then. So it's very possible within the next month, if things keep going the way we are, that we'll be in the orange tier, which we have not been in since the beginning of the whole tier system. So that, that'll be a welcome relief. So just in conclusion then, things are improving. Things are, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. We're moving forward. The cases are down. Unfortunately, we still had another person pass away this week that was COVID related. And I think we will continue to have cases and infection and, you know, unfortunate outcomes, but it's much, much better than it was a couple of months ago. The vaccines are continuing to roll out. We're getting them out as fast as we can. We think they're going to be increasing quantities here in the very near future. Vaccine hesitancy is a real thing and I want to really encourage people to think twice. If you, if you get an opportunity to get vaccinated, I would strongly encourage people to move forward. The more people we get vaccinated, the quicker we're going to get back to normal. That's just a straight up equation and we're seeing that all around, even with the variant. So like the, the variant in London, which is the, the B one one seven is moving around this country some. But very clearly, people that are vaccinated are much more protected than the people that are not vaccinated. So I think all in all, the more people we get vaccinated, the sooner we're going to be getting back to normal and having a more normal life. And yeah, we're, things are loosening up in society now. We're in, we're probably going to be in the red tier by tomorrow. And we're even starting to talk about the orange tier, which is something, you know, you probably have not heard me, I don't know that I've even talked about that in the whole time. So things are really looking up and it's going to be a better summer, I think. So thank you.
Very much for your report, Dr. Pace and Sarah. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Scott?
Good morning, Dr. Pace. Thank you for your report today. The only question I have is about vaccine numbers. I know the state had said at one time that eventually we'll know three weeks in advance how many doses we will have, so people will be able to make appointments earlier. Do we see that coming anytime soon, that people can make appointments a couple of weeks in advance?
I don't, I don't know. You know, there are so many moving parts right now between the TPA, the My Turn and the inventory. We just, it's, I look forward to that day. Our life is going to be so much easier if we can just say we're going to have this much each week and open up the appointments. I can't wait for that and I know our staff can't either. But yes, I know it's very frustrating to people because we only open up a couple of days at a time. But it's, I just don't see a different way to do it. And now especially turning over to this new platform. Once we get on that, I think probably by next week or the week after, we'll be able to start doing a couple of weeks at a time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other, Supervisor Price?
Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear this good news. And I, my question is about when we switch to My Turn and I don't know if this is a better discussion for the next item, but is there still going to be the ability to check IDs and appointments the night before through the application or not?
The way they've, it sounds like we are going to be able to continue doing that through the end of the month. Then, starting April, we will not. What their focus is, is removing obstacles. So anything that's considered an obstacle for people getting vaccine is what they want removed. So that's the current, you know, there's a lot of negotiations going on. This was, this was negotiated in a week or so ago. And it sounds like we're going to be able to continue doing that for the rest of the month. And then, starting April first, we're not. And they're, they're framing it that that's when we're going to have a lot more vaccine anyhow. So it's, so it's not going to matter as much, but we'll see. Yeah, I'm not sure how that's going to play out.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Dr. Pace, once again, want to thank you and all your staff and all the volunteers for another week of, of great work. The, the question I had is just, I didn't see an update. I know last week we had our first week of Johnson and Johnson vaccine that it came out. And I, I would just, if you could just report on, on how that went and how that was accepted as the new vaccine, you know, if you could just give a little report on that?
Sure. We got six hundred doses last week. We used five hundred at the site and they all got taken. We're saving a hundred for specific circumstances like, you know, if there's a migrant group that needs it and we know we won't be able to get them for a week or in a month or, you know, next time we need to do people in the jail or the homeless folks, anything like that. People that are specifically in a mobile situation, we were going to save a little bit. We, it looks like because of the way the manufacturing went, the state's not going to get any for a couple more weeks. Once we start getting more, we'll just, you know, we want to just keep putting it out as fast as we can. People seem to do pretty well with it. You know, the thinking is, is there's, the experience so far has been there's less reactivity to it than other folks were getting. We definitely feel like it's as good as the other vaccines in terms of protection at this point. As far as we know, that's the case. There's a little bit different numbers in terms of some of the research protocols, but the researchers don't really feel like those are comparable or significant that basically the Johnson and Johnson is as good as the other ones. And, and it's a lot easier to use because it's only one dose. So we look forward to getting more of it. The more we get, the, the more people we're going to be able to get vaccinated quicker.
Excellent. Thank you for that update.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Dr. Pace, thank you for your report. And just wanted to kind of give an update that I, you know, shared some of the discussion that we had for the past couple of weeks with working with our tribal health and a lot of other counties that are rural like ours are having the same issue. And so working on trying to get them linked up to figure out that solution as well. So thank you for doing that work. And Mo, thank you again too for, for putting in the effort for that as well. So just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for both of your reports from you, Dr. Pace, and Sarah as well. I know that I'm looking forward to us hitting the four million mark because then it looks like our numbers would be very close to already allowing us to be in orange if that was the case. So if we keep going and getting our numbers to look better, then I think that should be an easy step for us to take in the very near future. I agree with you. Every single one of my questions that I had, you answered. Thank you for talking about updating the website and looking forward to seeing that. Thank you for continuing to work on that. And also for the, providing us some idea of how we're being impacted by those coming from out of county as well. And I appreciate the process is already in place to make sure that that's minimal. So thank you for doing all that. The rest, I think, is the conversation that's going to happen with the MOU where there's definitely a lot to discuss as far as I'm concerned. But everything's looking good and I know many of our schools are very excited to get back to it. And so getting to the red is going to be really important. And I sure hope that everything we've been waiting for telling us that we should be there will come to reality with what's going to be talked about today at noon from the governor's office. So thank you very much. If there's nothing left for the board supervisors, then Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room. And Jake has been really nice about offering advice for those on the phone to hit star nine to raise your hand. But similarly, if you're on Zoom, if you click on participants, you have the ability to also raise your hand. It makes it easier to know who might or who might not have a comment. But Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room.
All right, so I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, sounds like we have no public comment on this agenda item. Anything further from the board before we move on? Perfect. So let's go ahead and close up this item six point two and let's go on to our extra item four point one. And CIO Hutchinson, would you like to start us off on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you taking this up while Dr. Pace is still with us. I should be able to respond to any administrative type of questions you might have about this MOU, but he's certainly your best source of information for anything related to the vaccines themselves. So as you're likely aware, originally, counties were being tasked with the need to enter into contracts with Blue Shield, which is the state's selected third party administrator for the statewide vaccine provider network. And this seemed unusual since counties were already operating vaccination sites quite capably in many areas, including here. And so in response to the concerns of counties and the preference that we enter into agreements with the state as opposed to the third party administrator, county and state staff got together and drafted this MOU, which is intended to be used in all the counties. Approval of this MOU is required for our county to continue to administer COVID vaccinations. And it ensures that the state will make reasonable efforts to allocate a supply of sufficient doses to us so that we can administer it. It requires each provider, which would include us and any other in the county that opts to sign up. We're all required to use the My Turn system, which Dr. Pace has talked a lot about in his reports. It's myturn.ca.gov. This system is necessary to submit all the required data reasonably as needed to manage the statewide vaccine network. This stems from the fact that it was reported to us at least early on, a month or so ago, that something like nine million doses had been shipped to California, but at that time- that something like 9 million doses had been shipped to California, but at that time only 7 million could be accounted for as actually having been administered. And so the state really wants to focus on making sure all those doses get used. Hence, the third-party administrator focus on making that happen. This MOU requires that the county follow the state's criteria in determining eligibility for the vaccine appointments, prioritizing those appointments, and of course, targeting members of the underserved communities that have a disproportionate burden of the COVID-19 pandemic. So it's staff's recommendation that your board approve this resolution, or excuse me, this MOU, authorizing me to sign it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pace, did you have anything you wish to add to that?
No, I don't think so. That seems, that seems like a great overview of it. Thanks, Carol.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board on this document, on this MOU? Yes, supervisor Price?
So it, you, Dr. Pace, you've been moving the vaccines around according to need with the different organizations in the county. So if you're not able to do that any longer, then how are we going to make sure that we have everything administered if there's a a larger amount in one area that can't be used? How, if we're not able to shift it around, how are we going to make sure that we don't have waste?
What they're doing is, you know, that's a great question, and that's the kind of the basis of any concern that we have. We're basically, the, the state administrator is taking over that function. So they will be working directly with each of the, of the providers in the county, and they'll be monitoring their inventory and determining how much vaccine they need. If they're not using it up, then they won't get any more. Theoretically, if they need more, they'll be giving them more. They're going to direct it to the areas with the, you know, the highest health equity concerns. They'll direct more vaccine to those folks. And so this is, basically, they want control over this, and they're, and we're, we are, we're just going to be one of the providers. So the other folks in the community will be providers with their own relationship with the state. We won't be in the middleman role for this.
And are they going to be providing more staff?
To us, to us to, to do things? You know, there's discussions about what resources we need. We tell them what we need. You know, we've had these conversations with them for many months, and we've gotten, we've gotten a couple of people, you know, we've, we, right now, I think we have two data people and, you know, and, but we're basically, you know, with Carol's help and Pam's help and HR, we've, we, right now, we've hired 16 temp workers. Just, that just shows kind of the need we have. The state has provided two people, and they're very intermittent, you know, so I, they say they're going to help us, so we'll see. But, you know, Lake County does this. We step it up, and off we go.
So we're still going to be relying heavily on volunteers, likely?
If they send people, we won't need to use so many volunteers.
We're not, we're not relying on volunteers heavily, I, I wouldn't say. I mean, we do have some. The bulk of our reliance is on, on paid staff. This is, this is a huge effort.
Right. I mean, the volunteers are mainly the folk, the clinical people tend to be the volunteers. They're the retired nurses, retired doctors. But most of the staff are either county's DSWs that are re, you know, redirected or temp workers, different things like that. So yeah, it's, Carol's right, it's a huge lift, and we are really appreciative of the support of HR and of the local partners that are helping us get people in here.
We're also really grateful to the volunteers that are stepping out. We should leave a mention of volunteers without expressing our extreme gratitude.
So I know that there's been discussion about mobile vaccination sites and being able to reach the people that are difficult to reach. And so is that a discussion that the TPA is also having for a rural county like ours?
Sure, that's, so, right, that, that's a huge need. That would be very high up on our requests, and it is, you know, that when we talk about the resources we're requesting, that's one of the things that's always on the list. So we'll see. The other thing is the state's talking about potentially getting OptumServe, the people that are doing the testing sites, to come in and do some vaccination sites. They're starting to pilot that in some of the larger counties. And so, you know, there's a lot of talk about possibilities, so we'll see. You know, this is going to go on for months. So this is, you know, we've gotten something like 10% of the population, I'm sorry, like 20% of the population partially vaccinated now. So we got a long way to go. It's, and to keep this level of staffing and things going, we could sure use the state help and use some of these other creative options.
Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor. Anyone else with a comment or question on this item? Supervisor Simon?
Yes. Dr. Pace, just for, you know, in your collaboration, it's been working very well with Sutter Adventist. Currently, everyone who is giving vaccines, have you had discussions on who is moving forward with this agreement? Because as you say, they need to be doing that. Do we have everyone that is currently, including ourselves, looking at this agreement that are administering vaccine in the county? Are they moving forward with this agreement? Do you know?
My, so, my understanding is this agreement is an MOU with the county and the state to, as, but I think the providers have to do a contractual agreement. Is that right, Carol?
Yes. It would be, they, they have to do an agreement. It wouldn't be this one exactly, but I think the question is, are you aware of the other local providers moving in that direction where they would continue?
Right. So we've had some, the state, so we're not brokering these with any of them, so they're not, you know, but we, initially, we were reaching out to them and saying, this is the way it's going. You know, if you want to keep doing this, it's going to be between you and the state. We're not in the middle anymore. And they all expressed interest and willingness. The first step was they have to get on MyTurn. And all the ones that are working now, Northlake Pharmacy, Safeway, Lakeview Clinic, Sutter and Adventist, I believe, are all going on to MyTurn. And then they have to set up these agreements with the state and be willing to jump through, because there's a lot more hoops, you know, there's data agreements and things like that. As far as I know, they are all at least considering it, whether they're going to cement the deal or not, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, that, that's what I was looking for, and thank for clarifying that, Carol. That was the question. You know, what we've always been battling is making sure we get enough supply, but now it seems like there may be just, just checking to see if we're going to be limiting our supply by somebody stepping out and not doing an agreement. So that was my, my question in going forward. I know you've done a great job of collaboration on all those calls last year, and, you know, just talking about what's happening with all the different agencies in the county giving these. So that was one of my questions. And then ultimately, another question on this agreement. I think it's in section three in, on the agreement down the bottom, the county's responsibilities. Thought there was a, I think it's number C, they said, you know, they, they could request some assistance from the county, and the county would have to provide it. I have a concern with just that one section. All of our questions, when we did talk to Ms. West, I think, from CDPH last week, talking about potential going forward with this was, hey, listen, we need support from the county, or from the state to the county, not from the county to this agency. And so I just had a concern on that one. I think the MOU obviously is something we're moving forward, and I may have that wrong, but I think it's section three, part C, county responsibilities, that I'd just like to, I'd like to remove that and say, put it in the other direction, that if we request from the state or from Blue Shield, whoever we're got, we're going into this with that, that they provide us help. We, we've been telling them that, we've been stressed. We talked about the volunteers, the temp help. You know, but looking through it, understand why we're talking about it today. But that one, that really jumped out at me, especially knowing our, our current constraints.
So Supervisor Simon, my understanding of that, section three, number C, is really about ensuring that we cooperate with the third-party administrator, even though we're not going to be bound contractually to them, which is a better status for us. And I know that Anita Grant, through her county council association, was involved in some of the discussions that led to that language, and she may have an additional comment. I see she's off mute. And certainly, we're going to continue to convey the message that we need resources from them. But I don't believe that's really the intent of this. So Anita, did you understand it differently?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I, in regard to this, Supervisor Simon's point is actually well-taken among the, the lawyers who worried about just wide-open requests. That's why there was the inclusion of the, of the word reasonably, as may be reasonably requested by the agency, to give some authority back to the local jurisdictions in terms of determining what's reasonable. So so your points will take in, sir.
Yeah. Well, thank you for getting the reasonably name in there, you know, obviously, and we'll continue it every conversation we have. I know as board members, I to, to let them know that the state needs to be helping us, or this agency needs to be helping us with support. So I just wanted to point that out. Appreciate the, the clarification from the legal standpoint, putting that control back to us, having the opportunity to deny the request if it's not possible.
Thank you, supervisor. Any other comments or questions from board members? So I have a question to Ms. Grant. Did I miss your hand of being waved, supervisor Price? Go ahead, supervisor Price.
I just have one more question about resources. Will we get any help with, or assisting with vaccine hesitancy?
Not under this agreement. That would be more of a public outreach, community education plan. Dr. Pace, any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I don't think this agreement addresses that. I mean, we could talk, do, do you want to talk about it? Yeah, because I think, you know, the hesitancy is going to be a big issue. It's not right now because we don't have enough vaccine for the demand. So the, the two groups that are working with the RFPs, with the Latino community and the Native American community are starting to address that, and I think this is going to be, and now, you know, I mean, the, I don't know, the news we're reading now is that there's a, people of a certain political stripe have a very strong preference to not get vaccinated, and will probably want to reach out to that, to those folks as well and try to encourage it. So you know, that's, I don't think that's going to be addressed really with this agreement or with the TPA, but it's part of just public health messaging. I think Hope Rising is one of the places where they're going to be helping us quite a bit with this too.
Okay, thank you for that question. I have a question for Ms. Grant. What exactly on this agreement is changeable? Or are we kind of bound to what's in front of us, or else the state says no? Because there are some other things. I'm really glad that Supervisor Simon mentioned part, section three C. That was one of my issues as well. They should be coming in here to collaborate with us and to complement our work, not tell us that, hey, we're coming in and you're going to help us when we need you. It, it, it's the opposite. You're coming to our house. And, and the contract does not read well for somebody that's coming to our house. In fact, I would almost say that I feel like I had two separate conversations, one with Carrie West from the CDPH, who said, this is really going to be a collaborative effort. They're going to help you take care of areas where you need help. And then here it says, no more collaboration with the hospitals. They'll take care of themselves. Well, that's, what if they have some hurdles they can't overcome, and we have a gap? Why can't we continue some of the work that we've been doing, where we can share, where they have direct access to patients? Where public health is not necessarily a direct access to patients, it's just to, at, direct access to the public. So I, I just have certain issues in there. So Ms. Grant, what is, what is our flexibility with this, within this MOU? Rather than just, this is what it is, it's a take it or leave it situation?
Anita, are you able to unmute?
I sent an unmute request to her.
I made a really important point, but it was lost to the annals of time because, let me begin again.
Thank you.
There is, there is truly no effective changes that are going to be made at this point. And counties have been discussing, and the county councils group had a work group. The last information, and I can give it to you, that we received on Friday and Monday, if, if you'll indulge me a moment, I'll read it to your board and the public.
Please.
The state views the MOU as the mechanism for counties to tell the state they want to continue to be part of the vaccine provider network once the TPA states, takes over. The state does not view the MOU itself as taking away a county's ability to allocate vaccine. They view it as a decision already made by the state when the TPA was created to centralize vaccine allocation. In other words, the state's already made this decision. The MOU doesn't change the decision the state's already made with regard to allocation, which is obvious in the MOU, but not created by the language of the MOU. For the state's point of view, then, a county's consideration or any provider's consideration of the MOU is about whether your county wants to continue to be part of the vaccine allocation system as a provider. It's, if the county doesn't sign it, it's unclear if the state would remove the county from the vaccine network, but certainly it would stymie your progress with regard to vaccines, one would assume. There was a question that was asked of the government operations department, the state level, as to whether the county could retain its own administration of allocation of vaccine with the understanding that it would take special care to, to ensure that it had complete responsibility for tracking and data, and that was completely rejected. It's not possible, the state believes, to implement a limiting principle to prevent sub-allocation. And again, what we're understanding is, from the state's perspective, they've made these decisions. The MOU reflects the decisions the state's already made.
Right. And what, what is the possibility of us maybe having like a side letter with the MOU to say, this is our expectations of how this MOU will be handled? Because let me just read a few sections that, that bother me. One is, the county shall not reallocate or redistribute to other healthcare providers any vaccine it receives to its allocation. County shall use all vaccine it receives to its allocations to administer to individuals it serves as a healthcare provider. It, it's kind of weird because I don't see us as a healthcare provider. We're public health. We don't necessarily have specific patients. Unless you, unless this page pretty much says the entire county is our patient, which is what it kind of sounds like. But it also, it's asking us to take on what hospitals could be taking on, because again, it's not 100% sure that hospitals are all going to get these contracts done, whether it's done in a timely fashion or done at all. And so then that means that there's more burden on public health, and yet they're saying that we need to give them resources rather than them give us resources. So it, it, it seems to be asking us to take on more, but yet not really promising us to give us anything to help with that, other than you will continue to receive vaccine. It just seems, it, it's, it bothers me. Then later on, it says on section, where was it? There we go. Section I, section two I, where on the last part, it says, county acknowledges that by signing this MOU, it is joining the statewide network of providers administering the COVID-19 vaccine that is supported by the TPA, acting as agency's agent and at agency's direction. So that's complete control over us. We are acting under the agency's direction. Or sorry, yeah, under the agency's direction. Then the county acknowledges agency's expectation that all providers in the statewide vaccinator network, which is us, will reasonably cooperate with the TPA. And I, I would just like to have a message that says, we would like the TPA. Eh, eh, and I, I would just like to have a message that says, we would like the TPA to also meet our expectations of what our community requirements are, what our community needs are. It, it just, again, it's somebody coming into our house and saying, this is our expectation, and you will act under our direction. Ouch. Um, so if you give us twenty-five people to take care of the clinic, we will provide the resources you need to help with whatever else might be extra. But if you're just coming in and we still need to provide the twenty-five folks that are doing vaccine clinics every single day, and possibly taking on more people to go through the vaccine clinic, where, where, where do we win on this, other than the threat that we're not gonna receive any more vaccines if we say no? And so if there's really no choice, and we're kind of put to the gun here to sign this, or possibly lose and fail, can we add a little bit of a side letter just to at least express ourselves that this, this, this is really not a great MOU to send at a time like this? That, that, this, this is not collaboration. This is not what I read when I read this MOU.
Well, well, sir, to the state's view, it is collaboration, or is collaborative as, as they intend to be. Again, because they've made these decisions with regard to allocations. They've made these decisions with regard to TPA. They've made all of these decisions, and those decisions are not changing, at least at this point, by the state. So the MOU reflects the decisions the state's already made and the county's participation in this process. Uh, certainly, you can draft a letter expressing your concerns, and it's quite possible that as this program rolls out, the state will become more amenable to changes as they see what works and what doesn't work. So that's one of the values of having a, a good relationship with the state at this point, so that if there's an opportunity to, to actually adjust some things, you'll be able to do it at, at a future point. If, again, the opportunity presents itself. The state is trying to get this vaccine out to as many as quickly as possible, and this is their determination as to how to do it. I, I wouldn't suggest a side letter because it's going to have no legal force in effect. You can't force the state to accept a side letter. They may view the side letter as a rejection of the agreement. You can send a separate letter, if, if your board wishes to, on a different agenda item, or you can direct staff to come back with an agenda item today. That would express some of your concerns. Uh, but it's my understanding that there is, eh, there is no option for further adjustment to this agreement. Now, having said that, you know, never say never when it comes to dealing with government agencies. But at this point in time, it's my understanding, and certainly Carol and Dr. Pace may, may echo that if they feel it's accurate, that this is exactly what's being presented, and there's no, no further adjustments beyond what have been made. And actually, moving this from an agreement directly with the TPA to a, uh, an MOU with the California Government Operations Agency is actually, uh, quite significant and very helpful to the counties. So that was a, a big change, and I think a very helpful one.
And, and I, I, I appreciate the comment, and, um, I'll, I'll look to the board to see if there's, uh, consensus to express those concerns through a letter. I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to approve this MOU. However, I, I, I think that our best friend in all of this is tribal health, because they don't go directly through the state. And so that can help us to con, continue, uh, with what's happening, uh, in the deployment to the community. Uh, and hopefully, we can get the rest of the, uh, vaccine clinics over at Sutter and Adventist and everywhere else to, to follow through and finalize their contracts. Uh, I think that those are all possible, but again, there's the potential that there could be some lag time and so on. So I, I'm willing to, um, move forward. I don't think there's a choice. Looking to see if the board is interested in a letter that expresses those concerns, uh, or if that's a complete waste of time to even discuss that.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, you do have a choice. Obviously, you can, you can reject it.
In, in my mind, the choice is very cloudy. It's, it's, it's a no-choice choice. Super, uh, C, C A O Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I understand the frustrating nature of this. It, uh, it certainly doesn't feel right to have this imposed upon us when we've been operating sites very capably here. And we've conveyed that in all of our discussions with state and, and also Blue Shield officials. We've conveyed to them that what we really need are staff resources to continue to operate for the long haul, as opposed to another layer of data collection. Um, nonetheless, they've, they've made it clear that if we want to continue, this is, this is how we can do it. Um, and as far as the concept of us being an agent to the state, I just wanted to add that, uh, as the longtime Director of Social Services, it was commonplace for the department to be referred to as an agent for the state. We were an agent, uh, that carried out state programs for which the state set all the rules and provided the funding. So, so it is not a terribly unusual relationship for the county to serve as an agent for the state when it's their program.
Well, I'd like to see the resources that, and, 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 in, in response to something you said, uh, yes, we've been doing a fantastic job of putting together a vaccine clinic and deploying the vaccine, but not without the struggles, and not without the, the burden of putting all that together. And, and to expect that to continue with now we're going to be directed by another, uh, layer of bureaucracy, um, and, and to provide resources when requested by that layer of bureaucracy, I think it's, it's, I, I, I see it as just slightly rude. So again, just looking to, um, but let's go ahead, and, and if we're done with, uh, board comments and questions, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Okay, looks like we're done. Jake, let's go ahead and open it up for the public, please.
All right. I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please, uh, state your, unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's bring it back to the board. Uh, I don't think that I should be asking for consensus on anything that's not on our agenda currently. Uh, so let's just shy away from that conversation. We'll see what happens in a, a future agenda item. Uh, but let's go ahead. If there's no further comment or deliberation, let's go ahead and, uh, take action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve memorandum of understanding between California Government Operations Agency and the County of Lake authorizing County Administrator Officer to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Johanna, please roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, again, our four-point-two item will be placed, uh, later in our agenda. We're going to go ahead and move forward. Um, thank you very much to Dr. Pace for, uh, both those last two items.